Okay, welcome to everyone that's joined us here in council chambers this evening, as well as those that are joining us from home. This is a meeting of the Pecoson City Council for Monday, October 24th. And if we can all please rise, I'll lead the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. While we enjoyed a beautiful weekend and a beautiful seafood festival and followed up by a beautiful workboat race, we are ever mindful that those in North Carolina, South Carolina are still dealing with the outcome of a hurricane. We've been there, Lord, our heart reaches out to them as they continue to recover from that event. Please continue to bless our military, those in public service, as they serve each and every one of us as we sleep safely here in the United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two very special presentations this evening. They're actually coming in from internal to the councils. Dr. Vernall, the first one is yours.
Thank you. You recall that a week ago Saturday, the Okalua up for the second time in Pecoson. And as was the case with the first time, the Pecoson Yacht Club held a reception and dinner for them. And this time it was for two crews. The existing crew that has been sailing it all summer was heading back to Hawaii and the new crew that now has it over at the Mariners Museum being refurbished and then take it down to the Panama Canal and then there on its own ship. But it was a very pleasant meeting. Everybody delighted to be on dry land for a while. Interesting crew, a lot of very delightful young men and women, as many women on the crew as men. They are extremely appreciative of the hospitality they have received here in Pecoson. And along with the two crews and their two captains, the president of the Polynesian Voyaging Society, and I hope I pronounce his name Nayan Noah, and his last name I can pronounce Thompson. That's good. Was there and offered some remarks. And Councilman Green had arranged to give all of the people their Pecoson pins. And they were very appreciative of that. And Mr. Thompson presented this picture for the city. It is of three of the Polynesian sailing canoes. There are six of them now. And it's signed by all members of the crew that were here. So this is a picture, then on the back there is a description of exactly what the society is and how they've gone about spreading the word for saving the earth. That's their theme. The okalua means star of hope, by the way. Very nice picture and a delightful group of people. So happy to present this and hopefully we can have it put up.
Absolutely. Can we get that framed and let's display it just, you know, I know lobby can be touchy sometimes, but let's put it in the lobby for a little better time? I think that would be a great show and bring a lot of attention to that crew. So they stopped through Pecoson twice.
Yes.
Once on the way up to New England, I believe.
Yes, they went all the way to Nova Scotia. And when you look at the boat, the interesting thing, the boat is held together only with ropes, no nail screws pinned.
It's the original construction.
Yep.
Wow. So you join in the crew?
They said I was not quite young enough for that event. But the crew, by the way, is all volunteer and highly competitive to be selected for it. A lot of them are college. Thank you for that.
And the second presentation, this is something that Councilman Green has been talking to council about for a long time. This is legislative items. And these legislative items deal with folks that may be slipping through the gap. And if I quote this wrong, buddy, please correct me, but slipping through the gap of existing law with their income just above a certain level that are not able to get some of the services that we think they should be able to get. All right, so proceed on.
Mayor Hunt alluded to two meetings ago when I brought this up. This is my rendition of a PowerPoint. So I apologize for the people at home, I don't have fancy slides for you to look at. I probably wouldn't know how to change them if I had them. This came about, like you say, two meetings ago. I was approached by the director of the Pecoson Food Pantry, Nadine Silcox. And she said she wanted me to please ask the council if we would adopt a resolution to support something other than the Medicaid expansion. Because the Medicaid expansion really becomes a federal unfunded mandate. They give you a lump sum of money the first time you sign up and then it disappears and it's up to the state, which means higher taxes and all that kind of stuff. So she said she had heard that there was a House bill presented that would do much of the same thing, but not be as honorous as the Medicaid, excuse me, Medicaid expansion. I called delegate Helsel to see if I could get a copy of that and come to find out there's not only one proposal, there were three. And the House Speaker said, okay, y'all decide which one you want me to put forward, and I will. And in typical fashion, they couldn't decide and nothing got done. So her request is that we support something of this nature. My recommendation is going to be that we pick the best of the three. And I'll talk a little bit about how we can word it later. But to do these justice, there's a summary of what the bill changes. It doesn't cover everything, so I've underlined in each one a couple of things that I'd like to bring out as I go through each one. So what I'm going to do, if you don't mind, is present these and just read the summaries because I don't want to leave anything out, don't want to paraphrase it and miss something. But I'll read the summaries and I'm going to present these from my point of view as the least attractive and the most attractive. And I'll start with the least attractive. The first one is House Bill 193, put forth by delegate John O'Bannon. And one of the things I've found that is different in the three is that two of them actually put forth a definition for charity care. The one that delegate O'Bannon put out says, "Charity care means health care services for which no compensation is received, provided to individuals whose income is less than or equal to 200% of the federal poverty level for a household of that size." Then in the synopsis of what he's proposing to change, he asked for the repeal the current codes pertaining to certificate of need, which is what hospitals providers have to get in order to provide any health care. Secondly, it says that the provisions of the second enactment of this act shall become effective on January 1st, 2017. Now, these dates aren't going to mean anything because they didn't adopt these, but I'll read them anyway. That's what he had proposed. "That the Secretary of Health and Human Resources shall review requirements governing imposition and implementation of charity care requirements for certificates of public need, including provisions for defining charity care," which I felt was kind of redundant because he's already done that, but he's now given the secretary the chance to redefine it, "and calculating the amount and value of charity care required and provided, and shall develop recommendations for standardizing and enforcing such requirements. Secretary shall report his findings to the Governor and the General Assembly by a date that's almost passed." So that doesn't really pertain. "That the Department of Health shall work cooperatively with Virginia Health Information to develop a process for the collection of utilization data for recipients of certificates of public need describing specific types of equipment utilized." That one is as far as his bill went. The second bill, which is House Bill 1083, put forth by delegate Chris Starley from Virginia Beach. Now, this bill does not define charity care. When I read the summary, you'll see that he leaves it up to the Secretary of Health. And the summary is, "The Department of Health shall develop recommendations to reduce the duration of the average review cycle for applications for certificates of public need to not more than 120 days from the date of receipt of a letter of intent. In doing so, the department shall consider changes to the current process that may result in a reduction in the duration of the review period, including elimination or revision of the review of applications for completeness, reduction of the current 70-day period for review of an application by the department, and a requirement that a public hearing be held earlier in the process. The department shall report its recommendations to the Governor and General Assembly by December 1st." The next paragraph is, "The Secretary of Health and Human Resources shall review charity care services delivered throughout the Commonwealth and shall recommend changes to the definition of charity care and the types of charity care requirements imposed upon various providers of health care services." And again, it gives a date, it's just about here. "The Secretary of Health and Human Resources shall convene stakeholders to study and make recommendations related to the appropriate authority of the state health commissioner to impose additional conditions on certificates of public need consistent with the state health services plan and the state health improvement plan. That the Secretary of Health and Human Resources implement a system by January 1st, 2017, or as soon as possible thereafter, to ensure that data needed to evaluate whether an application for certificate of public need is consistent with the state health services plan requirements are timely and reliable with such funds as are available. That the Secretary of Health and Human Resources implement a system by January 2017, or as soon as possible thereafter, to make all public records pertaining to certificate of public need applications and review process, including letters of intent, available in real time in a searchable digital format online with such funds as are available. That the Secretary of Health and Human Resources implement a system by January 2017, or as soon as possible thereafter, to make an inventory of capacity authorized by certificates of public need, both operational and not yet operational, available in a digital format online with such funds as are available. That the Secretary of Health and Human Resources implement a system by January 2017, or as soon as possible thereafter, to make charity care conditions, charity care compliance reporting status, details on the exact amount of charity care provided or contributed, and to whom it was provided or contributed, available in a digital format online with such funds as are available. That the Commissioner of Health shall develop and implement by November 2016 an analytical framework that incorporates review of the state health services plan to support the state health services plan advisory council in developing recommendations concerning the appropriateness of certificate of public need for specific medical care facilities and projects, or whether such projects should be subject to expedited review and improvements in the certificate of public need process. The analytical framework shall include a specific evaluation of whether certificate of public need review is consistent with the goals of, one, meeting the health care needs of the indigent and uninsured citizens of the Commonwealth; two, protecting the public health and safety of the citizens of the Commonwealth; three, promoting the teaching missions of academic medical centers and private teaching hospitals; and four, ensuring the availability of essential health care services in the Commonwealth and should be aligned with the goals and metrics of the Commonwealth State Health Improvement Plan. Analytical framework shall also take into consideration components of the approach utilized prior to 2012 in development of the Certificate of Public Need Annual Report. Include a recurrent three-year schedule for analysis, which shall be developed in such a manner as to ensure that projects are of relatively, that are of relatively low complexity and low cost are analyzed first, and projects that are relatively high in complexity and high cost are analyzed subsequently. Include appropriate metrics to evaluate the impact of introducing a more specific, more competitive health care framework that could reduce costs and increase access to health care services. And include a process for stakeholder involvement in reviewing public comment on any recommendations. That the Joint Commission on Health Care shall review the current role of regional health planning agencies in the process for issuance of certificates of public need and should develop recommendations for methods of eliminating differences in the certificate of public need review process from one region to another, including evaluating possible funding mechanisms to support regional health planning agencies and developing mechanisms to include region-specific analysis and encourage more local input in the certificate of public need process for all regions, including those that do not have regional health planning agencies. His was more comprehensive, but again, he did not define the, what is it called, the...
Charity.
Charity.
Yeah. The charity care. Thank you, yeah. Now, the final one, House Bill 350 S-2, which the S-2 just means that there have been substitutes presented to it, and this includes all of those. This one does define charity care and goes further than the first one. Charity care means health care services for which no compensation is expected, provided to uninsured or underinsured individuals whose income is less than or equal to 200% of the federal poverty level for a household of that size. So this bill includes the underinsured, which could be just as costly as somebody that doesn't have any insurance at all. It also goes on, which I thought was a very good idea, to impose a penalty. There was a penalty of $100 a day, but this bill says, "A certificate holder that fails to satisfy the conditions of a certificate or fails to comply with the plan of compliance shall be subject to a fine and an amount determined by the board, which shall be at least equal to the value of services the certificate holder was required to deliver pursuant to its certificate or plan of compliance. Such fines shall be deposited in the Virginia Charity Care Fund." Established in, and she gives the article in which that was established. In the summary, she also proposes to repeal the previous acts for public need, and that provisions of the first, second, and sixth enactments of this act shall become effective on January 2019, if monies in the Virginia Charity Fund created by this act will be eligible for federal matching funds as determined by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So now, when she's trying to get some of the funds that the federal government has promised, but only on a one-time basis. "That the Board of Health and the Board of Medical Assistance Services shall promulgate regulations to implement the provisions of this act to be effective within 280 days of its enactment. That the Chairman of the House Committee on Health, Welfare, and Institutions and the Senate Committee on Education and Health shall form a task force consisting of five members of the House of Delegates, four members of the Senate, to develop recommendations concerning the appropriateness of certificates of public need for specific medical care facilities and projects, or whether such projects should be subject to expedited review and improvements in the certificate of public need process. The analytical framework shall include a specific evaluation of whether certificate of public need review is consistent with the goals of, one, meeting the health care needs of the indigent and uninsured citizens of the Commonwealth; two, protecting missions of academic medical centers and private teaching hospitals. Protecting the public health, I think I missed it, and three, promoting the teaching missions, that was number three; four, ensuring the availability of essential health care services in the Commonwealth and should be aligned with the goals and metrics of the Commonwealth State Health Improvement Plan. The analytical framework shall also take into consideration components of the approach utilized prior to 2012 in development of the Certificate of Public Need Annual Report. Include a recurrent three-year schedule for analysis of all project categories, with procedures for analysis of at least three project categories per year, which shall be developed in such a manner as to ensure that projects that are of relatively low complexity and low cost are analyzed first, and projects that are of relatively high complexity and high cost are analyzed subsequently. Include appropriate metrics to evaluate the impact of introducing a more competitive health care framework that could reduce costs and increase access to health care services. And include a process for stakeholder involvement in reviewing public comment on any recommendations. That after July 1, 2019, the amount appropriated each year by the General Assembly for the purposes of health care services related to Title 19 of the Social Security Act, which is Medicaid, shall be at least equal to the average annual amount appropriated for such purposes between July 2014 and July 2019. That nothing in this act shall be construed or interpreted in any way as an expansion of Medicaid pursuant to the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act of 2010, or as authorized in the Department of Medical Assistance Services to amend the state plan for Medicaid assistance under Title 19 of the Social Security Act, in any way thereof to implement coverage for individuals described in, and she gives a section for that federal regulation. To me, House Bill 350 S-2 does the most for what we're looking for. And Randy had a good suggestion in that we word this resolution in support of this bill, or a similar one that includes all of the provisions of this bill. So that in case delegate Helsel or somebody else wants to present another one that has all this and is even better, that we are in support of it. And that we send this resolution to all of our representatives in the Senate and House. I appreciate your indulgence, and I hope I didn't put everybody to sleep reading all that stuff.
Buddy, you didn't put everybody to sleep because we know, I think all the members of council and much appreciated know how much you care for those in need. And really appreciate that and everything that you and Pat both do. So thanks for your research. Consensus of council here to put a resolution on the next agenda and move forward with that.
I, excuse me, I have to say that I don't feel like I have enough expertise in Medicaid and Medicare and health care to intelligently say that this bill is better than the other two, or that a modification maybe of some sort of combination of the three might be yet a better one. So I don't know that saying, "We support House Bill 350" is the best way to go. Maybe saying, "We support, we support something getting done." Say it more eloquently than that. But I don't know that we would want to say 350 or something that includes everything 350 has. Because I wouldn't want to limit them if they wanted to take something out or tweak it or modify it somehow. I think it's, I think it's a fine bill, but I don't know enough to say that maybe there's something in here that might need to be changed. And I'm not saying that it's not a perfectly good bill. But I wouldn't want to make a resolution saying, "We only support 350 as is, plus more."
So how about if we take the action to study what Councilman Green has put forward? I like the addition of that it at least covers these things, similar to House Bill.
Similar to.
This, okay?
With accountability.
With the accountability and the things that we're looking for is basically not proposing unfunded mandates at a local level.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I think that we can come up with the right words in the resolution that will satisfy us.
Yes.
Well, to give you an idea of how this played out, Josh, who's delegate Helsel's aide, put forth all the votes so far. And this bill passed in the House on the third reading, 94 yes, four noes, and one abstention.
Pretty solid.
It was a very popular bill.
Very good. Okay. Then that's solid, that's good.
But I like the wording.
And they certainly know, they certainly have studied it more than I have.
Input from the medical profession on any of these. All of this came about from a committee that they formed, or, I don't know, committee is probably not the correct word, but what they referred to in the notes that were passed on by delegate Helsel, that this bill incorporated much from working group recommendation. And I'm sure the working group included medical professionals.
I think our resolution would start with, you know, something that we want you to do something, and these are the things that we like.
Right.
Okay? Because I see it here at the local level, and we need their help to get this resolved.
We applaud them for House Bill 350. We, absolutely.
All right. So I'm seeing a consensus. So Randy, if you'll draft that up and add that to the agenda for the next council meeting, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anything else of anybody before we move out of special presentations? Any questions of Councilman Green?
No.
Okay. Hey, thank you, buddy. Really appreciate that. Thank you for reading all of those.
Thank you.
A lot of legalism. I should have got Wayne to read it and then paraphrase it.
All right, so we'll move out of special presentations and move on to audience for visitors. If there's anybody in the audience this evening that would like to address council on any subject, now is that time. Seeing no speakers, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mayor, move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of October 11th, 2016.
Second.
Motion made, second, that we approve those minutes. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernall.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
I'm staying.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0 with one abstention.
Very well. In the work session?
Mayor, move that we approve the minutes of our work session of the same night.
Second.
Seeing Judy, please, go ahead.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernall.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt. Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0 with one abstention.
Very well. The next item under new business is an ordinance amending Chapter 70 pertaining to sign regulations. I see the planning staff here, but let me see if I can get council through this. The one thing that we did last week, or two weeks ago, was that we met and we went through all of the various sign regulations, and we found that there were, there's a lot more work to be done. But I think the one thing that we could all leave that table with that evening was that we had no enforcement potential within the existing ordinance. So the only thing that we all agreed to move forward on was to add the words, "To allow the city to enforce the standards as they are currently written." And that is what is on our agenda this evening, is that our words were kind of crossed. So this ordinance amends Chapter 70 pertaining to the sign regulations. And unless somebody would like more information, I'd like to move forward with this item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 70 of the city code by revising Section 5 interfering with signs, poles, or structures within street right of way.
Second.
A motion made, second, that we adopt this ordinance. Questions or comments?
This would be what, a low-level misdemeanor?
I don't remember what it is. I can look it up.
There we go.
Well, that's okay. I mean, we're not, it's not a felony, you're not going to jail.
I believe it was to allow the city to remove the signs.
That's correct. To the best of my knowledge, we've never prosecuted an instance like this, or wished to, or want to.
It allows the city to remove the signs and I believe to discard of them.
That's correct.
Instead of, right?
But only if they're placed in an unlawful manner. So if they have a permit, they're good.
Okay. So not seeing any other questions? Judy, please.
I want to point out one thing.
What's that?
The ordinance as presented leads to a second reading and comes enacted in 30 days thereafter. And if you don't want to do it that way, you need to...
Mr. Mayor, I... Appreciate that. Questions or comments on that? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Next item under new business is a resolution making an appointment to the Wetlands Board.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Wetlands Board with the name Pappas inserted, and his term will expire October 31, 2021.
Second. A motion made, second, that we adopt this resolution with Mr. Pappas, his name inserted. He currently serves on the Wetlands Board. To my knowledge, he does an outstanding job, and questions or comments of counsel? Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Heer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. The final item under.
Councilman Freeman provides for a Class III misdemeanor, which is a fine of up to $500.
Okay, well, I was just curious, because it said unlawful for anybody to do that, and if it's unlawful, I just wanted to get the penalty out. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, the final item under new business is a resolution canceling the second meetings of November and December as we normally do. A motion on this.
May I move that we adopt a resolution canceling the second meetings of the month of November, December, 2016?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay. Didn't think there would be any on that. Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Heer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Comments with city manager?
Mr. Mayor, because I'm positive that, that others will talk about the workboat race, I will pass on that and speak only to the seafood festival and just once again express support and thanks to the entire community, employees and the volunteers and all the people that work to make it work, and all the people that are patient with the fact that we have such a large footprint event in our city and are so welcoming. It's the same every year, but it doesn't mean we don't appreciate it any less.
Very well.
Hey, thank you.
The only other thing I'd ask, is there an update on the little Florida road construction? We talked about it, I just want to, if there's anything going on, I'd like to continue to reiterate it.
As, as you know, we have it all up on social media and our website. We also use non-emergency 911, or, excuse me, code red functionality. We've placed, at the council's suggestion, signs, letting people be familiarized with the workboat, or work zone ahead. We put those up last week, and work should begin this week, probably maybe as early as tomorrow, but it.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. All right. Bud, we'll start on your end this, this evening. It was nice to see, by the way, Jean make it to fire department 75th anniversary yesterday. It was nice to see her back and on the mend, and I wanted to wish her well publicly, okay?
Thank you very much. She was really glad to get out of the house and get down with her ladies auxiliary friends, let me tell you that. I just wanted to second the comments made about the seafood festival and the workboat races. I think they went off very well on that and supported that, did an outstanding job.
I second that. We can move on.
Vice Mayor.
Me too. It was, I think, one of the better seafood festivals that we've had. Forty-five thousand people, we had one minor medical emergency, and that's police, whatever. So, just something about the crowd that we have. And also, there was a load, two buses of people that came to Carlsville, and one guy I was talking to said that this is the fourth year that his group has organized to rent buses, and I was surprised we had that draw, but we do.
Well, that's cool. I didn't know that.
So I thought that was a good thing.
Thank you. Councilman Vernal.
Two things, just one quick question. Have we gotten any further information about the repairs to the Breakwater at Mesic Point?
No, sir. Where we are with that is, in working with our insurance company today, I executed the, the task order for an engineering firm to do a structural analysis to determine whether or not it was, in fact, a structural failure based on design, a materials failure, or an installation failure. We are insured, but in addition to being insured, we, the contractor's work is under warranty for a year for both materials and installation if it was done incorrectly. So, the insurance company is paying the bill for this analysis, and as I said, I executed the task.
Thank you. The other thing, just Halloween is coming, everybody that happens to be listening, watch out for, for the kids on the streets. They, some don't look every which way when they're running around trick-or-treating, so be safe.
A lot of times, just so we're clear, that's a great point, a lot of times Halloween's not always observed on the day, depending on where it falls. It is on a Monday this year.
Yes.
Therefore, it will be observed on that Monday. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Just to eight, and fall under.
Oh, shucks. That's the only day I look better than I normally do.
All right. Councilman Green.
Two things, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I had the privilege of attending the first annual Unique Ability Run/Walk at Sarah Bonwell-Hudgens. I'm on their foundation and proud to do that. This year, we were honored to have the Honorable Henry Heer as our emcee. He did his usual great job. It's a 5K, and then there's a 1K walk, roll, whatever you want to do.
Or you can get there.
Yeah, but you can get to the finish line. And I'm proud to say that my daughter came in second in the women's 5K division, so she's in a heck of a lot better shape than her old man. And to remind people that tomorrow is the Food Bank at the Old City Hall from 10:00 to 1:00, and this time, it's being hosted by the Pecoson Women's Club and the Pecoson Garden Club.
Thank you very much, Councilman Heer.
Just to echo what everyone else said, the seafood festival obviously is great, and a lot of people, too many people to name to thank them all. The event yesterday at Sarah Bonwell-Hudgens, the older we get, the more, we become more humbled in certain things, and yesterday, that event was probably the most humbling experience in my life, and I was honored to be there and do that. Maybe next year, we can, Pamoka played a little part. I happened to meet somebody on a fluke, and I guess Buddy threw my name in there, and I got the honor to do that, and it was an unbelievable, humbling experience and an honor. The workboat race, everyone attended, we appreciate it. It was a great day, a great attendance from, people from all over the place came, which was great to see that. You had boats from eastern shore, and that southwest wind yesterday, those guys took a beating, and they still came here, and those guys all getting together on that dock, and seeing all those guys have that fellowship and keeping that heritage and that tradition alive is pretty awesome. So, appreciate the city letting that, making that available, making that happen, so I appreciate it, so.
Okay. I think all of you undersold a few things that you, you've done for the city of Pecoson out there, and I want to highlight those in my remarks. You guys are always too, too modest for things that I have you do out there in the community. First, I would like to echo the seafood festival. The big, big congratulations to me goes to the citizens for just, I think what Randy stated it best, we don't ever want to overlook that it's a hardship for everybody in Pecoson to have an event that large. It impacts your ability to get places, but it was great seeing everybody out there and people that were visiting, even if they weren't going to attend. I got one good suggestion, I'll pass that along to Parks and Rec, and I'll brief you on that separately, Randy. I will tell you, the workboat race, I appreciate you handing me the mic yesterday for just a few seconds to talk to the watermen, because I will tell you that that's the only profession I know where you are a businessman, a mechanic, a navigator, before you ever get out there to work the water. Okay? So, really appreciate that, and most importantly, I would appreciate the ability to thank Sonny Inslee and the group, and I thanked them publicly yesterday, because as most people know, the workboat race was scheduled for the weekend when Hurricane Matthew was coming through. And they called that event on a Monday before to allow the city to focus on what it needed to do, and that was very much appreciated. It made our preparations for a potential storm much better, and it was their foresight that allowed us to do that, instead of just saying, oh, what about this event? So we appreciated that, I thank them for that as well. Tomorrow, we have the Business Breakfast again, you know, we've been doing that for four years, looking forward to that. I will tell you that Councilman Green represented me, as well as all of us, at the HR, HR TPO, Transportation Organization, and then me personally on HR TAC, which is a Transportation Accountability Commission. And I will tell the citizens of Pecoson, you saw it in the headlines, local leaders, right? Well, what does that mean? It means people like Buddy, people like this council, got out there and made a purposeful decision with the money to move HR BT, or the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel forward in lieu of the lingering talk about a third crossing that could be decades down the line, a pack of road projects that, one, is affordable with the money that we got, that could be in place by the year 2040, I believe, was their end target, that included expansion of the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, the High-Rise Bridge in Suffolk, Fort Eustis Boulevard, Interchange, the 460 Connector in Suffolk, and then the final leg of I-64, I believe, was in that package that goes all the way north of Williamsburg. I appreciate you, Buddy, representing me there. I also appreciate Delegate Yancy for moving, for pulling together all of the various players that wanted something, and if you noticed, every other project I read was Peninsula Southside, Peninsula Southside, right? So it brought everybody together. One of the most important things. So, he really led that effort, and I wanted to thank him for that.
A lot of, if, not to interrupt you.
No, go right ahead.
But a lot of credit goes to the staff of the HR TPO and HR PDC, too, because they came up with this hybrid alternative. Before, we, we had alternate A, B-1 through 3, and then C and D, and two of our stakeholders, the Corps and the Navy, were opposed to anything other than A, and they came up with a hybrid that, that satisfied everybody. Suffolk, Virginia Beach, and it made a clear connection all the way from Hampton to Suffolk, and also the Fort Eustis interchange. So, I really commend them for coming up with that. That was the first we'd ever heard of it, and it was a great idea.
It's a great idea, and it moved forward unanimously.
Yeah, unanimous.
So, a great show there. So, a lot of people think that local politics deal within the city of Pecoson, actually, you have to think about all the things that I have each of you with. Bud, you're on Hampton Roads Federal Facilities Alliance, you're on HR PDC, vice mayors are representative to HR EDA. Dr. Vernal, I think I've got you on the board for, trying to think of which one that was.
I don't think so.
Okay. No, it's Buddy, Agency on Aging. And so, we all play a part out there in that community, and so really appreciate that. And then, last but not least, after the presentation last week from Virginia Power, I prepared a letter and signed it out today to Colonel Kelly in the Army Corps about the Skiff's Creek Project, putting forth our support to make a decision. I didn't say you gotta, you gotta pick Skiff's Creek, but analysis paralysis is not the way to move the peninsula forward. It basically says what Virginia Power told us, that they're, they're putting the peninsula at risk by indecision and make one. Okay? So, that's all I've got this evening, is unless anybody's got something else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Heer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.